Board of Selectmen's meeting to order on Saturday, November 5th, 2018. And as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing no one, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic for which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody for a weekly briefing? Good evening, Carolyn.
Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director, I just wanted to take a moment to thank everyone who participated in this safe Halloween. We had, on that day alone, because we have the door counters, over 1,000 people go through the community center door that day. Great success, all of the people who helped out in the community, all of the volunteers. There were well over 400 children with their families there. It was a great time, so, thank you all. And we could still use donations for the troops. That has to be in by November 14th. And look for the thank you letter to all of the groups and organizations who donated in the Chronicle coming up, so, thanks.
Thank you, Carolyn. Anybody else for weekly briefing? Anybody for public comments and announcements? And, go ahead, Norma, we'll do a after that.
Madam Chairman, Board, I see we're on the, up tonight to accept the donation from, Brendan from the Irish Pub. This is a longstanding tradition in town, and it's, it's, it's pretty special to hold on to these traditions that...
(laughing).
It goes way back. And it's a great thing for the town. We don't have any issues. We have hundreds and hundreds of runners. For some unknown reason, they want to run in 80-degree weather and humidity and just have a great time and go back. And he really takes care of the folks. I understand. But anyway, I just want to say thank you to the Irish Pub. And we all come together for that great event. And it's, it's special that we're here tonight with Brendan.
Thank you, Chief Clark. And, and just to officially announce it, accept the proceeds from the Irish Pub road race for the Harwich Fire Department with Brendan O'Reilly. Good evening, Brendan, would you like to say a few words?
Well, you can say hello to everybody. How are you doing? And I have to say, Madam Chairman, is that correct?
That's right.
That's right. The last person I saw in there was Shirley Gomes, right? Was, she was, that's going back a little bit. Nice to see some of the people who are here, like yourself. Ed was here a long time when we came here. We've been just dawning, this is 30 years, me coming in here. It's pretty good. I guess we're, we're sticking it out pretty good. But I'd like to thank Police Department and Fire Department for the help they gave us on the road race. And it was, it worked, went very well. Nobody got hurt, or at least if they did, they brought them home and took care of them. So it all worked out very well. Race went off very good, and I'm pretty happy. And hopefully we'll do the same next year. And I'd like to make this donation to the department. Hopefully you can put some tires on it, or something like that.
Thank you. So, thank you very much.
That's great, thank you. And thank you, everybody enjoys the Irish Pub.
Thank you very much.
We have nothing for, oh, go ahead, Ed.
As I announced last week, just a reminder that this coming Monday at the Harwich Cultural Center Auditorium, the Harwich Granberry Festival is presenting a concert at 7:30. And the cost of the ticket is $15. And it's a Swedish folk and traditional folk and rock band, so it'd be very interesting. So we urge you all to attend.
Great, thank you, Ed. Is there anybody else for public comments and announcements? Hearing nobody, we'll move on to the public hearings and presentations, the annual meetings. First, we have the Finance Committee. Evening, Jack.
Good evening, I'm Jack Brown. I'm the Vice Chair of the Finance Committee at this point. Dana was going to do this this evening, but he got called to work, driving back and forth to Boston. So I'm not going to have a lot to share. Dana assured me on the phone that we're okay on all the areas you ask questions about. And I would also like to add, to point out, we are charter strength, which has been a rare event in the last five or six years. And it makes a difference, because we get a lot, you get different viewpoints, you get more people to help look into issues and so on. I appreciate that. And that's my presentation.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Jeff? Go on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's not a question so much as a comment. I'd love to see you guys more involved in the DHY implications and discussions.
I will pass that along.
Chris?
Since he brought that up, I was going to bring up later in the evening that at the DHY meeting, there was an encouragement to have David Young come do a presentation to FinCom, the wastewater support and the Selectmen. And I think from, we had a little bit of a discussion on Friday, I know a couple of members of the board were there. But I didn't know if the board wanted to try to schedule a special meeting, maybe for November 15th, because we got, we really got the holiday coming up with the point of having FinCom be invited to attend and do an overview of the current status of the DHY agreement and talk about those different elements.
Yeah, I think that's a good time to, Don?
And to Chris's point, we did have a fair discussion about this. Love to see it as kind of a topic-driven discussion meeting, so that it was just that, and have all the relevant parties within town.
But are the board members available for next Thursday, the 15th, at 6:00 or 6:30?
Well, I think I am. Are you available?
I have a conflict I have to work around somehow.
Michael?
I'm available.
Okay. Ed?
I don't.
You're not sure?
I'm not sure.
So we'll have to get back to it.
Yeah, I just, we have members of, we have the Chair of Wastewater and the Vice Chair of Finance, I thought it was worthwhile to mention that earlier in the meeting than later.
Right. No, I think it's a, it's certainly a discussion we've had, and it's important to have that conversation, so. Don?
And I know that there's been wastewater committee participation, especially in that symposium that we had a couple of weeks ago. But I kind of think that it's long overdue that we had capital overlay, people involved with it too, because if there's any stability to our tax rate, they're going to have to understand what the implications are of layering this on top of what we already have done, and what that means in middle years.
Do you have capital outlay here tonight, so we can do a posting for four meetings opposed to three?
This was a uniformal directed at them.
Okay. Ed, you have any questions or comments for Jack?
No.
Michael?
No.
Larry?
Good job, Jack.
I did want to mention that we have John, or Tom Cherry here, Dan Torek, Mark Amorus, Angela Mantia, and myself from the committee. And Dana said that was posted.
Right. And, and I think that it's, we appreciate all the work you do, because you certainly do a lot of work for the town. And I think we've made it clear too, that we hope to work, you know, sooner rather than later with the various boards, so that we can try to get a good feel for what we're looking at. So, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Good night.
Good night. On to the Capital Outlay Committee.
Since Mr. Brown took so little time, I'm going to take his time as well as my own. Good evening. Chairman Kavanaugh, Messers Gasco, Ballantyne, McManus, and Howell. My name is Chris Harlow. I'm the Vice Chairman of the Capital Outlay Committee. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk with you tonight about the last 12 or so months for the Capital Outlay Committee, which I may refer to the COC, just to save time. I'd like to address about five questions with you tonight. First, who are we? Our committee is made up of seven individuals. Richard Larios is the chairman, he couldn't be here tonight. Angelo, who has been previously introduced, myself, Bruce Nightingale, Joe McParland, Dana DeCosta, and Peter Wall. Most of us know these people fairly well, and I think we have a pretty powerful committee. What's special about this group? They ask questions, they listen very carefully to the answers, they discuss, they debate, they sometimes argue, and they attempt to reach a consensus with a vote. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the partners in this enterprise. The town departments, some 18 in number, and this year we interviewed about 15 or 16 We respect their opinions, we trust their judgment, along with the volunteer boards and committees who they appear with. I'd like to give special attention to our Town Administrator, Chris Clark, and our Recording Secretary, Charlene Greenow, for their unbelievable support. We could not get to first base without their tremendous organization and skill. Our attendance is outstanding. We've all passed our state ethics certification, and we've taken our oath. Question number two, how do we operate? Well, basically, I'll make this pretty short. From roughly September through December, we meet almost every week, and we meet with departments on an individual basis. They review their proposals for funding to be placed on the capital plan. These interviews include written and oral reports, supporting documentation, questions, and analysis. We've done a number of site visits, and we continue to find that is an unbelievable resource as we try to dig deeper into the operation of these departments. Finally, our final report will be submitted.
He'll take a message.
Got it?
Our final report will be completed in the next couple of weeks, and by December 10th, we'll have something formal to present to Chris and the town. We may have some slight changes, if history is any model, for things to do before annual town meeting. What do we always keep in mind if we work on the capital plan? There's three basic things. First, we list all the capital improvements proposed to be undertaken during the ensuing years. In this case, it's FY '20 through FY '26, with supporting information as to the need for each capital improvement. Secondly, we include cost estimates, methods of financing, recommended time schedules. Finally, we include additional information, such as the annual cost of operating and maintaining each facility and piece of major equipment. Without doubt, the depth and clarity of these department reports continue to show dramatic improvement over the last dozen or so years. What are the highlights of the FY '20 plan? I could go on and on about these, but I'll just throw a couple of things out there for you to consider. You'll see the more details, including numbers, when Chris makes his report in a few weeks. Several items are going to dominate this plan. The highway barn metal roof insulation, a five-year road maintenance schedule, a pumper fire truck, lower county road maintenance, Pleasant Road Beach parking lot paving. The Water Department has Pleasant Lake tank fill pipe replacement on its agenda. Most of these that I mentioned are over six figures. What keeps us up at night as a committee? That is, besides the Red Sox and street music in the summertime? In brief, if we were to have a model on our T-shirts for the COC embroidered, the jacket would say, "Our money, well spent." It has two parts. First, our money, not my money, not your money, but our money. And we're very cognizant of what we can provide the town in terms of financial resources, but we also have to look out for our neighbors. What is their capacity to contribute to the town? The second part is being well-spent. And here I must reflect on the Board of Selectmen's 2016 strategic plan. Some of you are deeply involved in creating that. You know it very well, but I'm not convinced that the town knows some of these points. These are guidelines that the Board of Selectmen had given to us, and I'm quoting or paraphrasing here. These 15 guidelines center on developing financially sound practices, efficiencies, and most importantly, transparency in town government. We must be physically, fiscally responsible and conservative. Our decisions solid and practical. In terms of these 15 guidelines, seven of them directly apply to the Capital Outlay Committee. Specifically, the budget should increase by about 2% a year, not 2.5% as allowed by law. Secondly, there should be no debt exclusions or capital exclusions. We should know the amount of free cash before we begin to take votes on fund requests. We seek greater efficiencies, such as reducing our vehicle fleet. We should make better use of availability of county services. We should seek alternative funding, such as grants. And most importantly for me is, we should encourage departments to examine and reexamine their core mission. Some final thoughts, as I look into the mirror for our committee. I ask, are we doing our job? Do we avoid easy and expedient yeses and instead say no with objectivity and conviction? Are our decisions based on reasonable research and good data? Do we work well with town staff and employees as well as with other town committees? Are we fully aware of the town's financial capacity to assume debt? When we incur debt, do we consider its impact on individual taxpayers, other departments, and future debt? Are we sensitive to the need to have a smooth funding curve year by year? Are we visionary, proactive thinkers, or do we tend to simply react to crises or problems? Are we good stewards of the resources provided to us by previous generations? And finally, are we responsible to all the citizens of Harwich? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Larry?
Just a comment, Chris. Well done. You've, you've great vision and great report. Three items that caught my, caught my attention reading your report that sort of reinforces, I think, some of your key points. I really liked your action to include debt surveys going forward, because sometimes we don't look at understanding what debt were occurring each time we pass a budget. You've mentioned it in passing and in senior report more details, to look at the sale and reuse of assets. We don't spend much time doing that, and I appreciate your committee taking that on. And the item that we never pay enough attention to is maintenance. And I appreciate you taking that on as well. So those three items, in addition, all the good things you said caught my, caught my eye reading your report. So, good job.
Thank you.
Michael?
Just great job, Chris, as usual. Thank you.
Ed?
Great.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just going to reiterate in different words something you said, because it's something that we've been discussing. There's an awful lot of people who live here generationally who are land-rich, but cash poor. And you often hear comments like, well, this is going to make their house more valuable, or whatever the capital project is. We have to be aware that that's great, except that that would require them to cash out. My, my vision of the future is, everybody gets to arrive on shore together. So assuming you follow through on everything you're saying, which I believe you will, that's something that's really important, is to keep this level to the point where the planning, fiscal planning, isn't just our planning, it's they can plan on being able to pay their property taxes.
Thank you, Don. Thank you very much for your report. It's excellent and very focused, and we appreciate that, and we do agree with many of your points, and we believe as a board, we're working towards those as well, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
On to the Planning Board presentation. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening. I'm Jim Joyce. I'm the Chairman of the Planning Board. And Chris, that's an awfully tough act to follow. Very well done. Anyway, I'm, I'm the new Chair. I replaced Larry Brophy, whom we all miss, and Larry's experience will be sorely missed, and certainly is missed by me. He's been a great guide. We also have our newest member here, Craig Chadwick, is behind me, to my right and to my left. We have Jim Atkinson and Joe McParland, who've both been a great help, and as well as Charlene Greenow, who's our, our town planner. And she stepped right in when Ally Sabatino left for Chatham, and she's done a great job, along with Elaine Banta. So we have had 18 meetings so far this year. We've had two cases carried over from 2017 and 37 applications, which the board has approved. These include a new medical facility, two major town projects, the fire station number two and the golf cart barn, one regional project, which is Cape Cod Tech, excuse me. We've also had five commercial site plan reviews, four waivers of a site plan, and one mobile food truck special permit, which is very important to us in the summertime, right? We've had one road name change, one for-profit education special permit. A big topic, of course, is the, are the accessory apartments, we've approved five of those, and two additional accessory buildings with bedrooms, 7A and R plans, two preliminary subdivision plans, one definitive subdivision plan, and one definitive cluster subdivision plan. We've had three applications withdrawn without prejudice, and we have one case pending. And we have also, the divisions of land created 16 new building lots, which is always good news. We've also sponsored four public hearings for zoning amendments, which include the extension of the temporary moratorium on retail sales of marijuana, the ban on the retail sale of marijuana, and the use special permit for retail sale of marijuana. All but the, all of those but the use special permit were approved, and the use special permit was not. Large-scale ground-mounted photovoltaic array, solar energy, along with the green community work, I think has, has really helped us set ourselves apart from others on the Cape. And I think we really have to thank Charlene for her work in that regard, and of course, all of you. We began reviewing and discussing potential zoning amendments in September, and will continue this work. The board also supported the application for funding for CPC grants for the Housing Trust and Coordinator. One of our, our goals is to become more user-friendly and respectful to our fellow citizens of the town of Harwich, which is a great place to live. And I think perhaps the most important point to make here, like Chris mentioned in his report, all of our, all of our members on the Planning Board are up to date on ethics. And with that, I conclude my report.
Thank you, Jim.
Any questions?
Don?
No, I appreciate the work you're doing, and I very appreciative of you jumping in the breach here this past year.
No worries. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Hold on, one second, Jim. Ed, do you have any questions?
No, Ed. Thank you for your work. Okay.
No questions. Thank you all for your work.
Larry?
No, thank you.
No, thank you very much, Jim, we appreciate it.
Okay, thanks.
And now, we will go to our joint meeting with the Planning Board to discuss the accessory dwelling units and expanding zoning for Route 28 downtown retail. Do we, Chris? Do we have this public, open?
They should open their meeting.
Yep. Come on, Charlie.
Do you need to call the Planning Board? Do we want to call your meeting to order?
Yes.
Yes, for Chris.
So, as the Chair, I'd like to call the joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board to order on Monday, November 5th. As stated earlier, recording and taping notification as required by law. The town may audio or video record this meeting. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the Chair. With that, I call this meeting to order on the topic of, there are two topics actually. One is accessory apartments, accessory dwelling units, and number two is expanding zoning for Route 28 downtown retail.
Right, thank you, Jim. If you want to go over the accessory bylaw changes, the existing and the proposed, it's probably the...
I'll let Charlene handle that. I've got it here.
Yeah, whatever's easiest for you, Charlene.
Whatever you like, Charlene.
Charlene Green, Houghton Town Planner. I did draft up for the Planning Board for their last meeting, although the Red Sox game kind of crunched into that, so not a lot of discussion happened. However, the thought process that I brought forward to them, which they have not had the opportunity to vet, or even really to discuss at this point, is to create it so that accessory apartments within an existing single-family building envelope would be allowed by right, would still have to meet all the same criteria as that through the special permit process, and then any accessory apartments in an accessory structure would still require a special permit. So that's where that thought process is going, still very early in that discussion and conversation.
Okay. So it would still be special permit in terms of if you're not meeting this, the requirement of the lot size, et cetera, or if you were doing the accessory dwelling?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay, so, I mean, do you want to review the actual existing bylaws, so that members of the board also understand?
One accessory dwelling, or accessory apartment is permitted for each dwelling unit, so you can only have two dwelling units on a property. The accessory dwelling unit may not be held in separate ownership than the principal one. Only one principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented at any given time. The accessory apartment shall have a net square footage not exceeding half of the net floor area of the principal dwelling, but also not more than 900 square feet. The assessing, assessive, accessory apartment, I'm just going to call it an apartment from now on, shall not have more than two bedrooms. The minimum lot area required for parcels to be eligible, in this case, it would be by right or by special permit, depending upon where the, it is located, would be not less than 15,000 square feet if a parcel is situated in the RH1, CV, CH1, MRL, MRL1 districts, 20,000 if it's situated in an RL, RM, or RR district, and 40,000 square feet if it is situated in a water resource overlay district. The apartment shall be designed so that, to the degree feasibly, reasonably feasible... now on, shall not have more than two bedrooms. The minimum lot area required for parcels to be eligible, in this case, it would be by right or by special permit, depending upon where it is located, would be not less than 15,000 square feet if a parcel is situated in the RH1, CV, CH1, MRL, MRL1 districts, 20,000 if it's situated in an RL, RM, or RR district, and 40,000 square feet if it is situated in a water resource overlay district. The apartment shall be designed so that, to the degree feasibly, reasonably feasible, the appearance of the property remains that of a single-family dwelling with matching materials, doors, windows, et cetera. The principal dwelling unit and accessory dwelling unit shall meet all wastewater treatment requirements for the combination number of bedrooms. The proposed use shall not exceed the building or site coverage for the zoning district. And in addition, to be built for the purpose used, in addition, shall be setback from front, side, rear setbacks as required by the zoning district. Copy of the decision does need to get recorded at the registry deed if it received a special permit. One other key thing is, under the existing bylaw, transfer of ownership, you have to go back to the Planning Board, suggesting that that actually be stricken and that it actually go with the property. And a final determination that the owner failed to comply with these provisions, or the termination of occupancy by the owner of the property, again, that would have to change. So this still needs a little bit of more culling through, but the idea is to have it by right, meeting the same criteria as if it were a special permit, so that when it is reviewed by the building commissioner, and for that matter, by the whole community development team, because we review each and every building permit that comes through, it would have to meet all these criteria.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Larry?
Thank you very much. I appreciate you speculating by right. I want to push a little bit, even though you've done a lot of work on this, and that is, you know, can we even, in doing more for accessory apartments and maybe accessory bedrooms? For instance, in East Harwich, a lot of the lots, it's an RR district by and large, and a lot of the lots are a, less than 20,000 square feet, and more like 15,000, which wouldn't meet that criteria. But if you look at it, we're getting, we're being seared there, and even your older criteria allows you to add somewhat more density if the nitrogen is reduced to five milligrams per liter, five ppm, which will allow someone in one of the houses, again, in East Harwich, maybe to put a, I have a specific case where someone would like to put a bedroom in for her ailing mother, and it's restrictive on that. And I think there's enough leeway in our net zero policy we're doing, as long as you keep it within a land control policy that we've worked on. We're always concerned about the SRF funding. I will note that both Chatham and the Falmouth, I just learned today, were able to get, well, I can't speak specifically for Chatham, but Falmouth, I learned today, was able to get their SRF funding, even though they have a, an item in their bylaw allows them to put an extra bedroom in the sewered area, because it means those other requirements. And I think we could do more to make it, to be more flexible in adding accessory apartments. I'm not arguing that this part may not be by right, but at least by consideration, let people move forward on that. So I'd push the Planning Board to look at, be as flexible as we can within that criteria. The other thing I will note is, is that we do have a, you know, with the land control, we can't go overboard, but we do have some flexibility, and we have expansion built into our planning for searing that will give us some flexibility as well. So I just want to push back and ask you to do even more in making it, allow people some flexibility to meet their needs.
Charlene?
Unfortunately, that's more of Board of Health regulation than it would be a zoning regulation. Board of Health is, through their regulations and ultimately sewer, are the ones who are going to dictate the number of bedrooms that are permissible or the addition of bedrooms. We certainly can look at the zoning part of that to possibly, you know, alleviate the need for 40,000 square feet for an accessory apartment, but it's really the number of bedrooms is dictated through Board of Health, not through zoning.
Well, let's just start with the community development and discussion, what we can, if possible.
Over the years, most of these have been down toward the water, between 28 and the water. People own properties down there and wanted something over a garage or something like that. But as the town becomes sewed, it's going to, it's going to spread out a lot more than what we had been handling through our agenda.
Right. Jim, did you want to say something? Michael, do you have any?
No, my question is just going to answer.
Okay. Ed? Do you have any questions? Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I start, I know Larry lives in East Harwich. I'm going to divulge, I live in East Harwich and at the, right inside the Drinking Water Resource Protection District, but it isn't about that. There are a whole generation of houses that were built in that area that were done by cluster subdivisions. So while they started out as a grid, what we consider to be an acre, like the 40,000 square feet, they nonetheless are five-eighths of an acre. And without considering, first of all, let me say the Drinking Water Resource Protection District thought is very high in my mind, because it's not just about searing. It has to do with recharging our wells. So I'm not talking about trying to bend or twist that aspect of things, but recognizing that it may very well be in that situation if somebody were to convert a portion of their house with the same number of bedrooms as an outcome. This doesn't appear to allow anybody to do that in the Drinking Water Resource Protection District, if they're in a cluster subdivision.
It's certainly something that can be looked at. I mean, this, like I said, this is very, very early stages of review. Chris?
Just, I'm going on to the Affordable Housing Trust, and I just thought I would be remiss. I've had the pleasure in this last year and a half to present to Planning Board three or four town projects. And, you know, I've been in government for a long time. I think one of the core elements of this is to allow the individual homeowner that wants to do things really for family considerations or financial considerations, to be able to go in and have a conversation with the building inspector and see what works, to have it be a little less intimidating. Because I know in my experience, I mean, I went and I thought you guys were very friendly, and I get it, but it's very regulatory. And I know most homeowners, I'm sure, are concerned about going and having to present something in front of a board. And I think it's important here to give those folks that aren't going to make any changes to their property, other than just internal and get the additional units in there, I think it really is important to let them have a conversation with the building inspector and to accomplish that. And I think this has been crafted very well in terms of if someone wants to add a building or do something that's really going to alter how the site looks, that that should come before the Planning Board. And I think this draws a nice line, and I would just really encourage the Planning Board to have a little bit of the political courage to be willing to let some of that authority be delegated off to the building inspector or the building commissioner, and let people be able to do things that are within the tight confines of this. And I think for the board, I think that would be something that is going to head in the area where the board wants to go in terms of trying to create housing for the youth of the community and also the seniors in the community that want to continue to live in their homes.
Right. And to that, to that point, I mean, we have an aging population, and if you have a scenario where, you know, you're looking for an additional bedroom to house an elderly parent or something, I think we could all agree that, you know, that's something you want to be able to provide to the community, because it's a hardship as it is. I just have a question in terms of, I don't recall the exact wording in the original, the bylaw that the commission had presented. Does it deviate much from the proposed?
To be honest, it's been so long since I've actually looked at what the commission did. I worked from what we had and tried to lighten that up. I certainly can look at what the commission had. I know we also got a bylaw that the town of Brewster proposed. I'm going to be looking at that, too. I wanted to do this so the board had a starting off point for conversation. I would remind everybody that, as we know, zoning takes a two-thirds vote at town meeting. So the more people that, you know, we have that support these changes, the better off we will be at town meeting, because it's really going to take that push at town meeting. That two-thirds vote is oftentimes very difficult to obtain.
And Charlene, I know you mentioned about the fact that, you know, obviously, a special permit would have to be recorded if that's how it was granted, but it's not a deed restriction that would be placed on the house.
No, not at all. All it, because it is a special permit process through the Planning Board. Currently, any special permit variance or otherwise does need to get recorded at the registry deeds to be part of the permanent record of that property. So when you do deed research, it pops up.
Pops up, right. Okay. All right. Any other questions on this item? So when you have your opportunity to review, I think it would be helpful if you wanted to come back and discuss, or, you know, even just give us an update on where you're at. Yeah, that'd be great. Michael?
I just, from a formality in terms of how the board does it, and maybe some of the more senior members can help me. I thought that if the selectmen want to have Planning Board look at something, that there has to be a vote to send them that material for consideration.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know if that's...
Hello, hi. Do you want me to answer that?
That'd be great.
If a zoning amendment is proposed by either the Planning Board, the Board of Selectmen, the Zoning Board of Appeals, or by petition, that gets referred or sent to the selectmen. They in turn have to refer it to the Planning Board to start the public hearing process. I wouldn't even want to go that step, because once a public hearing is advertised, that is locked in as zoning, and I don't want to be premature on something that we may decide, wait a minute, we want to go a slightly different direction. I want to get this vetted by not only the Planning Board, but also legal counsel, as well as the, I would want to, and the Board of Selectmen, to get it as close to finished as we possibly can before it even goes to the point where it's being formally referred to the selectmen.
Thank you.
For the, I know, the zoning is odd.
No, I, understanding that we have a whole process in and of itself, and then coming back, and then have, I just, I hope that we can, you know, get this so that we are slated at some point to have it in time for a town meeting.
That is my goal.
Okay, great.
Hopefully, it's the Planning Board's goal, too.
Great.
And I think it is. Joe?
Once we get going down the road, we're bound by certain restrictions and by mass general laws. We can't, it's just not open-ended.
Right.
We have certain time restrictions, though we have to do, do certain things by.
Right, that, exactly, and I understand that. So just to make sure that if we can stay on that guideline to have it at town meeting, it would be great to see how the town feels. So, okay, do you want to go on to the next item?
Sure. Next item, expanding zoning.
I actually don't know what the conversation was intended to be regarding this next item. I kind of took some liberties and thought I knew what you were talking about, but it doesn't mean I did. I wasn't sure if you were talking that space in Harwich Port that is zoned residential to expand it. I wasn't quite sure what the topic was.
So the area that goes from Snow Inn Road down towards Stone Horse, I don't know the numbers of 28 there, but down in that direction, that's the different, that ends at Stone, Snow Inn Road, it's CH1 that ends, or is it CH2, which?
There's actually, the entire length of Route 28, except for two sections, are zoned either commercial village or CH1. All allow retail, office, they're commercial zoning districts. The only two areas along Route 28 that are not zoned commercial are, you should have a map in your packets. From Freeman heading east towards Chatham, just by, just past Witchmere Harbor Road is actually zoned RL. And I did look at what all those, how those buildings were being used for, and they are primarily single-family dwellings. None of them would really lend themselves becoming a commercial building. The other area that is zoned residential is right at the Herring River in West Harwich, and that zone is very narrow in that, it's basically the river that's zoned residential. So unless somebody's putting a houseboat in there. So those are the only two areas for the entire length of Route 28 that are not zoned commercial right now.
And then is it that it's Long 28, that there's like a 200-foot setback?
It is a depth of 200 feet on either side, except when you get down near where the existing, right at Chatham Road, it does go up to Old County Road. So it's a little bit wider there, so like where the existing Outer Cape Health facility is, that's actually zoned commercial.
Okay. So you don't see any possibility, and if you were to rezone that, to be able to give people some different opportunities to do anything in that particular?
Just to clarify, are we talking extending the width of it? So that it's wider then? I mean, years, when, when I was here way back in the early 2000s, we actually did look at that, to rather than have it be a static line of 200 feet, we actually looked at having it go to the property lines, and that met with such great opposition.
Oh, really?
At the time. I mean, just such great opposition that it, I don't even think it went to town meeting. It never even got that far. As soon as conversations started up, people were coming out going, no, I, you know, I don't want to be next to now a commercial, you know, potential use. You know, I like where I am, I'm close to the Route 28 corridor or close to Harwich Port, but I'm far enough back that I'm in the residential zone, so I know I have that little buffer around me. So, you know, if the mindset has changed, I'm happy to look at that again, but I know back, you know, in like 2004, it was not looked at favorably at all.
Well, that's good to have that history. So, does any of the board members have any questions? Larry? Michael? Ed? Don?
You can count on me. Just, my experience with some of the zoning is kind of stale right now, but the CV zone, when it got adopted, it was for, it included top-of-the-shop zoning, which hasn't become fully realized, but that was mainly because of septic issues, not because of lack of capital.
And actually, that's the commercial village overlay district. So there's the underlying zoning of the commercial village, and then there's the overlay district. And, I mean, the new building where Dino's was, Camelot, the eyebrow building, that, you know, that took advantage of the commercial village overlay district, and that does have four apartments up above. They're not affordable, but they, there are four units up above.
That was where I was heading in terms of opportunities. That overlay only exists for a portion of Route 28. I mean, it may be meaningful to allow that to occur. Just as an example, we can, let's say they decided to rebuild the whole building and then go up a second story so that they can have people living above it.
Actually, that's allowable in that zoning district.
And it's not allowable in all of the zoning on 28, is it?
I think yes, it is. It just, what the CV overlay district allows you to do is kind of throw zoning out the window and allows you to build right on the street, to have that commercial feel that used to be, you know, quintessential New England. You know, that during the 60s and 70s, kind of, oh, no, you need to be back from the street. Well, this is allowing it to go forward again. So in...
The nicer way of putting it is it hides the parking behind the building.
Well, it does do that, too. Joe?
Somebody told me that an old resident of town, Judge Hall, had his law office where the new building is now. His law office was right on the sidewalk many years ago. And we're also looking at, if you think about it, in fact, it hasn't arrived on our doorstep yet, but it's coming, down, further down 28, that big open piece of land, there's a beauty salon on the corner of Bank Street. There's a big piece of land that runs back, well, that's the next, we've heard rumors, we haven't seen anything hard yet, but supposedly, that's, that's the next piece in Harwich Port that's going to be developed, and I'm understanding it's going to be same or similar to what was put right in the middle of town.
Okay. Well, I guess, I guess the question is that why, there are a couple areas down, further down 28, that I think they've been on the market different times for lengthy periods. And so I guess the question, I guess, I wonder why they sit for so long. There must be something that is a restriction, like the cabins, for example, across, you know, I mean, there's got to be some reason that there's limitations there that people don't bother to...
And we talk to people quite a bit at our, on Thursday's Community Development meets, and we allow folks to come in if they have projects they, they want us to look at, you know, before it gets formal. And we've talked to a couple different people about that particular property. And in that case, because it is a split zone, 200 feet is the CH1 in the back part. Also, you need to be a billy goat to get a part of that. You know, we have talked to different people about the properties, and I think part of it is just, property is so expensive. When they look at what the cost of that is, and then they look at what it costs to build these days, a lot of people are really getting frightened by that, unfortunately.
And so there's no opportunity through any kind of zoning change? Because to your point, Joe, obviously, there's regulations and such that you can't change.
Well, we've even had people come in and say, what if we did a 40B there of mixed use? And you can do that under 40B. You know, having commercial development out front, and then, you know, two or three units, buildings, you know, either duplexes or triplexes out back, and have 25% be affordable and 75% be market rate for either first-time home buyers or a mix of ownership and rental. And, you know, we've talked to a couple different people, and they just, we don't see them again.
Right, right. Well, because then you do have those two different restrictions in terms of residential versus...
Right.
Okay, so I think, I mean, I think that adds clarification. I mean, if there's, you know, certain opportunities that don't exist, or that you see, that you think, you know, we should be looking at as a board, that, you know, there are opportunities as we all know.
And vice versa.
Yeah, right, so, I mean, I think the collaboration is important, because we all know that there's certain things in town that are restrictive, and if we can help people, if we can help an aging population, if we can help bring younger people back here and, or stay here. I mean, those are priorities for this board, and I think they're important, especially in today's environment, so. So thank you for all of your hard work, and please keep us informed, and we will, too. So we appreciate your work.
Are there any more questions or concerns?
Any other questions from any board members? No, thank you very much.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I'd like to move that the Planning Board adjourn the meeting of this evening.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll go to the overview of legal services for tax title property matters, Attorney Don Bloom.
So, Madam Chair, maybe I'll invite Attorney Bloom to come up. We had, at a request of one of the members of the board, look at taking a little different approach to how we do tax title. So, we did engage the services of Attorney Bloom through the direction of the Town Treasurer, and I just thought it may be worthwhile that she brings a different approach to the measure of how we pursue tax title, and give her an opportunity to present that to the general public.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Attorney Bloom.
Good evening, thank you very much, gentlemen. So, yes, I work at the pleasure of the Treasurer. So, what Amy does, when she puts a tax taking on record, soon afterwards, or a select number of files will be given to our office. So, Berenson and Bloom is a tax title office exclusively. We've been collecting for municipalities exclusively for over probably 14 years. We represent approximately 80 municipalities throughout the state. So, when we get a series of takings from a municipality, we'll just open a file, kind of look at the record, the legal record, to see what we can kind of put together in terms of ownership. You know, sometimes the property owner is deceased, their heirs involved. Sometimes a family member lives there, and a different family member owns it. Sometimes parents are deceased, so there are a lot of different situations that kind of unfold to tell the story behind the house. So, we try to figure out what the story is, and then we can also see if there are encumbrances on record, such as a mortgage. And once we determine kind of the ownership of the property, and whether or not there's a bank involved or something like that, we'll send what we call an initial demand letter. So the demand letter, we try to hit a current property owner. So we'll do sort of a, we have a, some services that we can use to try to inform us of good mailing addresses. So we'll utilize those services to sort of make sure that we kind of get a good hit, and we'll send a certified demand, along with a first-class mail. And hopefully, we'll get, you know, we'll make contact with someone who will then call our office, so then we can have the conversation of how much is owed, and what's the story? You know, what's going on in the family, or what's going on with your financial picture, so that the taxes aren't getting paid. So, it's that dialogue that usually lends itself to a conversation of either a payment plan. You know, we don't talk so much about reverse mortgages, they're not really that popular, but we do talk about, you know, what are their limitations financially, what can they do? I think one of the real goals of our work is to try to put people on a payment plan. We feel like that really serves the property owner as well as the municipality, because of the statutory interest rate of 16%. Of course, the town is making 16%, not that that's what you're supposed to do, but it's what you're allowed to do by statute. And it gives the property owner an opportunity to make payments without having to go to the bank. A lot of them have credit issues, so they're kind of prevented or precluded from taking out a home equity line or something. So, we just kind of work with them based on our experience and what might best suit their situation. So out of the files that we've been given so far, we have a lot of payment plans in place, and, you know, it's sort of a revolving picture, because every month we try to open a couple more files. If for some reason something happens, the property owner isn't living there, the property is vacant, the property, the amount owed is just excessive, you know, to the point where a payment plan is really not a viable option for the property owner. Then we can talk to the property owner about selling the property, and if they are not inclined to have that conversation, we will then look to what we would call filing a petition in the land court. And if we file a petition in the land court, then the court does their own title exam, and they send their own notices to the property owners. That gives them just another opportunity to kind of reach out, enter into a payment plan, sell the property, work together with their family members. But it does provide an opportunity for everyone to kind of get together, assess their situation, and see what they want to do about it. I mean, the ultimate goal is just to either, you know, get the property taxes paid, either by having the property owner somehow redeem through this process, having a bank pay off during this process. Oftentimes, the banks won't file until, won't pay until you file the petition to foreclose. But in certain situations, I mean, the town could end up owning the property through this foreclosure process, but that usually means that the property owners have been notified, they've had an opportunity to rectify the situation, and for some reason, it just isn't a viable option. And then if the town ends up owning the property, they can then auction it off at a tax possession auction, to try to redeem your taxes at that point, including all legal fees.
Thank you for that overview. It's definitely a process, for sure.
It is a process, yes.
Any board, any questions from the board? Don? Ed?
You said that your, the tax rate you're allowed is 16%. Is it required?
It is, yes. It's a statutory rate that the municipality does not have any authority to waive or change. You can, there is a local option that you could adopt that would allow you to waive up to 50% interest. Most of the municipalities that I represent have not adopted that. They just choose not to, I guess, so.
And how, I mean, is that something that goes to town meeting, that you would have to have?
It probably would, need to go to town meeting, yes.
Michael?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. Chris, we discussed this, I think, two, three weeks ago, when you brought taxes before us, and you had mentioned at the time that you gave limited properties to start as a feel to Attorney Bloom.
That's correct.
When are we going to get an overview of what's left? Or when are we going to give Attorney Bloom or another like organization more to collect on?
We had a meeting probably two or three weeks ago at this point, and we went through the list, and those items that we thought, or those properties we thought would be practical for her to do, we added to that list. So as a courtesy, the Treasurer's allowed me to sit in officially, it's just the Treasurer's call. But we have added to the list, and we'll, probably will continue to do that until we narrow the list down to a more reasonable level. And just, you know, just to, I want to make sure that 98, probably 98.5% of people pay their taxes in a timely fashion. And really what this is, is equity. How do we have everyone be treated the same? And, you know, it's going to be funny coming from someone, it makes life easier, balancing the budget when we get that 16%. But that 16% comes at a hard price for the homeowner. And, you know, come up and just talk to us and establish a payment plan is really the better approach that benefits the town, benefits the homeowner, and they're not on the hook for that 16%. They're eliminating some of that by paying it down. So, you know, really what we're looking for is just to make sure that people do come up, talk to us, and a lot of these are family situations that just require a little finesse and a little understanding. So I think having this approach is a good approach, to be able to work with people in a constructive way to transition properties, to make them so they're not such a hassle for people.
Right. Larry?
None, thank you.
I do have a question, and it's kind of a very specific question, so I don't know if, Amy, if you want to answer. I'm just wondering, you know, if you have an elderly person who owns the house, so it's really taxes they're only owing, and, you know, maybe there's a possibility that they would have fallen into the ability to have those, them abated over time if they had known about the process. Do we ever find ourselves in that kind of, not really? Thank you, Amy.
Sure. Yeah, there is, unfortunately, there's a limit on that. They have to apply for those abatements by, I think it's the end of January every year. So these cases are well past that point.
They couldn't ever go back, right?
Right.
That's what I figured, so.
Right.
Okay, and we're going to move forward with adding to Attorney Bloom's listing, yeah?
That's why I asked the question about the tax rate, because, you know, a lot of those people that are so destitute that they would qualify for an abatement to essentially eliminate their tax burden, they are probably also not in a position to be able to actually make the application, and so to continually keep a burden them with a 16% tax rate, it seems to fly in the face of being, in some ways, a compassionate community.
Yeah, I think, you know, maybe we could advertise, you know, the process for abatements, the stipulations for them, maybe the COA can maybe help with reaching out to some of those people that they may be aware of.
Board of Assessors.
And, you know, oftentimes, the abatements are relatively low in comparison to what you think they might be. Sometimes you can get a $500, you know, abatement, which is helpful, but sometimes it's not enough. There's also a deferral program, but it, again, has to be applied for and entered into on an annual basis. And that just reduces the interest rate to 8%, but even 8% is still fairly high. So some sort of notice, I think, is the best opportunity. Sometimes I mention that to people if I'm in that situation. I don't think that I, I personally am working on a lot of those for the town of Harwich, so I do think, though, that we're all very sensitive to that situation. If it's just an elderly person owns their home outright, perhaps their social security isn't sufficient, you know, to even pay the property taxes. You know, it is a delicate situation, and a delicate conversation.
So if you did find yourself in that position, would that be something you just, you brought back to Amy's attention, and it goes from there, or?
Um, yeah, we just kind of work, you know, talk to them, talk to their family members sometimes, with their permission. Sometimes, it depends, you know, it's really fact-specific, to be honest with you. But I try to work together with the property owner to come up with what I call just a long-term plan. You know, what's going to help you long-term? Because, you know, if you're able to stay here for 10 more years, are you really able to, you know, take care of the property? You know, what's your, sometimes they want, really want to stay in their home, and sometimes they really would like to get into a situation that's just more feasible for them, more comfortable. So, I've worked with some municipalities with certain agencies. We can send agencies out to these elderly people to kind of just make contact, talk to them, you know, kind of assess their situation, if there are any kind of physical infirmaries or limitations. And sometimes a relocation is good for them, and it gives a lot of time and opportunity for them to, you know, kind of figure out how they want to manage their property.
Right.
So.
So in those scenarios, I mean, I'm sure they're case-by-case basis, where you kind of come across those and have to figure out, and if it's, you know, that you can involve the COA and, you know, help with services. I mean, ultimately, we just want to make sure that the seniors are taken care of, and that, you know... Ed?
In those cases, also the obvious agency to involve is the Board of Assessors.
Right.
Because they're the ones that grant the abatements or the deferrals or whatever.
Right. Chris?
I do want to make sure that we kind of say this, that, and I really appreciate the two ladies in this regards, that the reason why we're not pursuing everybody is that we do know that there are some cases that are really hardship cases. So we are not actively going after, we are looking at people that, you know, we believe have the ability to pay, that just aren't, because maybe they inherited the property, and now they just haven't managed themselves. So we've been going after those as kind of the initial. So when you hear, like, we're not pursuing everything, well, there's a reason why we're not pursuing everything. But we are making some pretty good gains, I think, in the area we are. And most towns around us have a much lower list of people that are, you know, out there, that are remaining. And that's really what we're trying to do, to narrow that list down. I know when we started, it was about 300.
Yeah.
And now we're down to...
We're down to, I think, around 270 now, but we are, you know, in the process of working on the 2017 new tax plans. And right now, I think it's about 40 of those. So, we whittle it down, and then it jumps back up a little bit, yeah.
Okay, and thank you very much for your information.
Yes.
I think we're all set, and thanks again, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And the Harwich ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan, Valerie Fletcher.
Where would you like me to sit? Good evening.
Good evening.
You can advance your slides right here, and then go back and forward back.
I'm delighted to be here, actually, very pleased that I had the chance to actually sit through some of your proceedings. I'm so impressed. This is a very kind and dignified place to live, perfectly clear. So a nice treat to be in a place that is so thoughtful. I live in Boston, and it isn't quite so gentle. I am delighted to be able to share with you the findings, and I will do this quickly, I know everyone is...
If you would just state your name, though.
Oh, sorry, my name is Valerie Fletcher. I'm the Executive Director of the Institute for Human-Centered Design. A 40-year-old nonprofit headquartered in Boston that has been the consultant chosen by the town of Harwich. And we have worked closely with Christopher Clark as your ADA Administrator, and with Matt Hart, who is on the Chair of the Disability Commission.
Yeah, Matt, you want to join in?
And we actually presented at the beginning of this process with Matt. This is the, this is the self-evaluation, I guess. The project is in two parts, so I'm going to quickly go through the presentation that will give you a little better fit on exactly what we've done. So, it's in two parts. The ADA self-evaluation is this product, so the big hefty one, and this is the transition plan. So you go from an analysis of both property and programs, essentially, and out of that, distill a lot of information that ends up as a capital plan. So this is a capital plan for long-term planning and budgeting. So that's why this is really a spreadsheet, and this is an enormous amount of information. I'm going to very quickly go through the sets of buildings, sets of properties that we worked on. So we did, we did a smaller set of things than had originally been hoped for. This was a $30,000 project in the end. If we had done the whole town, it would have been substantially more. You have considerable sophistication in both Matt's committee and in Christopher's expertise, so I think that what you have is enough to really understand the needs of Harwich going forward. So, public buildings, Town Hall, Community Center, Cultural Center, Brooks Library, Cranbury Valley Golf Course, were your public buildings that we looked at. These are sort of the hit list of significant issues, none of them dramatic. So there are issues with parking, there are issues with signage, compliance signage, typical issues with counters, they tend to be too high, not a lowered counter for someone who needs to sit while filling out a form, for example. Multi-user toilet rooms, the classic of what is almost inevitably something that needs attention. You can see here some of the images of things that we saw, most of it quite correctable without an enormous amount of capital investment. Public buildings, the library, sorry, Town Hall, Community Center, I went backwards there, sorry. there, sorry, enhanced usability, these are things that we are just recommending. They are not your obligation legally, but things that we think would make a significant difference. And I know this is something that Matt and the Disability Commission have been concerned with, and that's, that's something beyond your minimum compliance with either state code or federal law. And that's the connectivity of Harwich's sidewalks and being able to really make your way through town, go where you want to go and safely cross the street. And that is sort of the subtle connective tissue problem of the town. And it's, it's really beyond your legal obligations, it's the usability of the town and the safety for the people who are particularly vulnerable. Is that fair to say, Matt?
Yes.
Okay. So...
Especially Howard Center.
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, that's, that, it's been so great to be able to have local residents who know these things intimately and we're observing and documenting. And in truth, probably your biggest problem isn't the law, but indeed the usability. The semi-public buildings, the Chamber of Commerce, the Public Safety Building, Highway Department, water, again, it's sort of parking and service counters and signs and toilet rooms, it's kind of the same set, none of it terribly egregious, all of it needs a bit of attention. In some cases, I think the town is going to end up with its own resources of human power and ability to fix some of these things. Enhanced usability, again, we recommend providing an adjustable height exam table with adjustable support rails, and this is very specific to the fire department. Again, not needed under the law or state code, but sure would be an enhancement to people's sense of confidence that you had a service that was going to serve people. Parks, just Brooks Park and White, Brooks Park and White House Field, parking, again, playground, lack of firm, stable, firm and slope-resistant accessible route and lack of an accessible route to and around ground-level play components. I think we've provided some guidance on how to think about doing that to minimize burdensome maintenance issues, which is really typical in playgrounds. There's a, there's a very good bit of federal guidance that I believe I've shared with Christopher and with Matt. Amenities, it's really the same kind of thing, designated accessible seating at bleachers and this issue of walking surfaces. It's the playground surfaces, the walking surfaces, and then a little bit on the toilet rooms there, excessive slope leading to the toilet room. So it's really making it comfortable for people to use it. This is, again, enhanced usability, a safety measure, consider filling in the open stair risers at the stairway leading to the press box. A small detail, but one that really speaks to safety. And considering, consider locating the rules of the ballpark sign on an accessible route, very small. We only did four beaches and they are all your ocean beaches, and you have done some terrific work on your beaches to create accessible options for people. It, it's still something that is so important to Harwich that we would recommend that you, you pay close attention to getting these right. Again, partly thinking about the number of people who really need accessible parking to enjoy, you know, the real destination for Harwich for so many residents and visitors. More accessible parking places, an accessible route to the amenities, again, this is really thinking about the number of people who cannot actually easily traverse sand and to be able to really have beaches that are available to everybody who wants to go. Minor accessibility in the toilet rooms, again, just a little bit on ma- on maintenance of signage, nothing egregious. And I think what we, we'd recommend is that you try to eke out more accessibility features at all of your beaches, including the non-ocean beaches, and learn from what you've done so well at some of these beaches. The accessible route to the high tide level at the beach is something that, that's a, that's a, that's a, an enormous advantage to people who want to go to the beach, thinking about the route going to high tide level. Providing more seating areas near the high tide level, I mean, that's where people want to be, that's where people want to spend an afternoon in nice weather. And accessible portable toilets on the far side, far east side of the Red River Beach. You've got portable toilets there, you should have an accessible portable toilet. We reviewed your website and overall, you're built on a very good platform, it's a Drupal platform for having a good accessible site. You have some of the same problems that we find in a lot of towns, municipal websites. You don't have the features that make navigation feasible for people using assistive technology, who are mostly people with low vision and who are blind. Numerous forms are also offered as PDFs on the website, many of them were generated from scanned documents and they're not accessible. A chore to get that dealt with, since many of the forms probably are not readily available as Word docs to make them into accessible PDFs, but it could be a practice going forward that you just don't put anything up that didn't start as a Word doc that can't be made accessible. You have an absolutely reliable problem that we encounter in almost every municipality we work with, third-party, they call them widgets or portals such as registration online, the thing that really makes a website accessible or inaccessible. So the website itself could be just fine, when these kinds of, of add-ons are, are pursued, they are overwhelmingly inaccessible and create problems that you wouldn't have otherwise. And this is something that just sort of has to be backed out and done in a different way. And then, and that, this is, you know, the change of procurement language, you don't get stung by this kind of thing. The marketing on this stuff to towns is aggressive and very successful, and you've just got to protect yourself by not having procurement language that doesn't protect you from buying a pig in a poke, which is what happens. And everybody is getting kind of scammed in this and you've been a little bit scammed. Policies and procedures, this is the heart of, you know, can people access all the terrific programs available here? And these are the requirements for your administrative procedures. You've designated your actual town administrator as your ADA coordinator. I'd have to say, we've seldom encountered another municipality where the town administrator, acting in that additional role, is so involved and so visible for it. So hats off to Chris for actually being a real ADA coordinator. Notice of nondiscrimination policies, you need to standardize the practice and include it in all materials, the website and public buildings. Basically, you are clearly committed to nondiscrimination, tell people that, and that's your obligation. Complaint procedures, I think you've got good complaint procedures for, for staff, you need them to be made much more rigorous for the public, so that people know that they can make a complaint, it will be taken seriously and dealt with objectively. Reasonable modification of policies, practices and procedures, very ordinary stuff, it almost always has to do with service animals, but staff need to understand that. Effective communication, this is another tip of the hat to Harwich. You have to really excellent effective communication resources available to the public, especially through the Brooks Library. We would recommend that the Mass Office on Disability look at the Brook, Brooks Free Library as a state model. It's really a terrific set of services and for a small town to do it so well is remarkable. Given the large proportion of older residents, we would recommend that you really need a robust system in every public building, that any staff that deals with the public needs to be aware of how to interact with people who may have sight or hearing limitations and almost inevitably don't say so. That's just an inevitable reality. You need to have staff who are sensitive to be able to perceive when you have to intervene and ask if somebody needs assistance. We would actually make a suggestion that as town administrator, your ADA coordinator would benefit from another employee in the town taking on the role of really paying attention to effective communication, knowing when you need to make sure that you've got a CART interpreter for a meeting. Scheduling American Sign Language if need be, preparing large print materials, this is not the town administrator's job. And he does a very nice job, but that's a bridge too far, we would suggest. It'd be great if there's somebody who really cares, who might have a, you know, a parent or a sibling with a sensory disability, and we'd just suggest that that happen. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to work with you because it's been a nice experience and great to work with people who are as committed as the residents of Harwich, whether they are staff or elected officials or volunteers like Matt and his committee. It, it, it bodes very well for a place that doesn't see this as a tick box, but sees this as something that's intrinsic to running things well.
Thank you very much, you're a great report. And Matt, did you want to add anything or have anything?
Well, basically, it's a lot of material. What I had, I put here the little bit of information here. In this manual, it's broken down in four areas, there's a program, access, or town priorities, safety or navigation issues getting around, additional access required. And a lot of the older buildings, the doors aren't wide enough, they're not high enough, things like that, and enhanced accessibility required where it's a problem. Just for your edification, under those four categories, they add up to 271 areas that are itemized and talked about. It's interesting, 59 of them don't cost any money, it's a matter, we can just immediately do it. Now, one of the things that worked out for our town, it was a coincidence, we've got a new police station, fire station, Allen Harbor, a lot of the buildings were previously inspected by the, the building inspector within the criteria and the timing. If that hadn't happened, like in a lot of other towns off Cape, this would have been a lot more expensive. Now, we did go through the beaches to a degree, four of the beaches on the salt water have, as you know, a town meeting, new restrooms. And they, we've got the Harbor Master Office and Maintenance Building in the East Harwich Fire Station. Sidewalks are an important thing, and I'm working with Chris on this and Evan. The other thing is because the regional school is a regional school, they go under their own category as far as the inspections. So we're fortunate that we can focus on items that do remain with the municipal area, but they're not crisis ones. There are a lot of signage, it's, the doors aren't enough, a lot of the restrooms, the plumbing is exposed and things like that. I was worried to begin with they'd find something terrible, but they didn't. And with that, we're, we're moving forward. Chris, maybe you want to touch on the fact that what the, the budget items that you've put in, if you would please?
Yeah, actually, just in terms of that, you know, where do we do? You know, it's nice to have a report, but in order to make a report mean something, you have to implement it. So to that point, I, I think what we'll do is we'll go through with the department heads and see those items that policy-wise, we need to make revisions that we can do. We will meet with the, the virtual town and school provider on the website to see if there's certain elements they can improve. The one thing that the report did is that because it's a company that is more familiar doing nationwide work, they, they provided what I believe was a means standard. So it's a, means is a book that people use for estimating. It's good for a general idea, but not necessarily good specifically to the Massachusetts market, and the Massachusetts market's a little bit even more, Cape Cod. So we do have an idea of what the cost will be, so we have factored that into the capital plan. Sean is here, Sean Libby, who has been tasked with kind of making sure that he goes through the list and those items that are facility-related, that he will put into the capital plan. And I, I have said this to the Capital Olay Committee that for planning purposes, we have those numbers in there. I fully expect that those numbers will be higher than when we finally get to the final element of it, because using a federal standard is different than, we have prevailing wage, we have certain more architectural access issues than other states do. So I think those costs are going to be more. But to have a list and know what we need to do and, and the timeline that we need to try to get it accomplished in, we are looking at trying to do it over the next three years.
Wow.
And we will try to use as much in-house staff resources as we can, which means we can decrease the cost, but we also have to be flexible on the time to make sure that Sean has sufficient time to be able to get some of this work done. So we are going to convert this, now that we've had the presentation to the board, throughout the organization, to see if we can get those 59 items that don't have any costs, let's get going on those, and those items that we do believe have costs, and let's start working on that to become even better.
Great. And Chris, one, one last point, if, if it would be helpful for this issue of effective communication, for people to be able to learn how to feel more comfortable interacting with people, we can provide a free training from our ADA Center. But it, having people be able to play out the awkwardness of when do I pass a piece of paper and a pencil to somebody, when do I ask them if they need assistive listening, is something that people need to feel comfortable with and a training for direct, staff that interact directly with the public, I think it'd be a good way to go.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'd like to add one thing, we do have extra spaces on the committee, it would be great to have a few other people.
How many do you have?
We have four.
Four open spaces?
We have three open spaces, we have four participants, I'm sorry, we have four open spaces.
Okay. So you only have three participants right now? I just wanted to add a thank you to Matt Hart. Matt, you populated the committee, you brought it back forward, you populated it, you got the meetings going and you made this happen, so thank you.
Well, we're, in the eye of the state, they're, they're kind of using us as an example for small towns. I don't know if Chris wants to get into it, but we've also, in addition to his budget, with his guidance, I applied for a grant to pay for all of this. Now, we don't know if we're going to get it, we'll find out in March, I think. But the, this is a big problem with a lot of the towns. You're supposed to go through this every so many years, I don't know exactly how many years it is, but we were way back in 1990, so we were way over it. It was, but the, I've gone, thanks to Chris, I've gone to Boston in several meetings and they're looking very closely at the way we handle this because it is, it's, it's a difficult process and they seem very pleased with it. They asked for a copy of this and they have it.
Wow, that's great.
Thank you very much for your cooperation. Larry is very helpful, he's part of the committee, thank you.
Thank you, Larry, for your added effort, too.
Thank you.
And it's nice to hear that.
Before Matt leaves, I, I need to point out that his committee has a lot of work yet to do. Because what they're looking at now is, as Chris alluded to, we're now taking the spreadsheet and prioritizing the projects, both in terms of safety and then costing and what Sean and, can get done. So they have a lot of work yet to do as well.
That's why we'd like some more people.
Well, it's also great to hear that Brooks Library was commended for, for their, you know, all their efforts.
Really nicely done.
No, that's great, thank you.
Thank you.
For, for many years, we've been very proud of the, the programs that Brooks has been developing under the tutelage of Carla Burke and our librarian, Gina Hewitt.
It, it's, it's really outstanding and more people should know about it because I think a lot of libraries in Massachusetts could learn from you. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Valerie. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to take the opportunity before Matt leaves the room to make mention of the fact the committee lay fallow for a number of years and Matt got all fired up over it and decided that he was going to be all in, he started recruiting members to recreate the committee, so that there is even having a discussion here tonight is a tribute to his tenacity to get this committee rolling again.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Matt. Okay, on to accessing online septic and water ties, Megan Eldridge and Dan Pelletier. Megan and Dan? Good evening. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good evening. So the goal here tonight, Dan Pelletier, Water Waste Water Superintendent.
Thank you.
Megan Eldridge, Health Director.
Thank you.
What we're trying to do is go through in the public's eye how to access your water and sewer tie cards and really what to do with them as well. So we'll jump right in. First slide here, we have required property owner action. So at this point in time, what property owners should be doing is locating their existic, existing septic system and water service tie. And what they're going to be able to do with that information is identify the preferred lateral location, or what we're also calling a stub. Once, once they identify that location, throughout the construction process, CDM Smith is going to be distributing to all of the affected residents, along with, you know, coordinated with the construction sewer service postcards or lateral location forms. And what they're going to ask the residents to do is identify on that form where they want their sewer service to become, onto their property. Once that process is completed, it's really a hurry up and wait until the sewer system is ready to receive flow, at which point Megan will be sending out, or the Board of Health will be sending out a order to hook up, and the expected time for that is 2021. And that's kind of the, the drop dead date where property owners...
And that's kind of the drop dead date where property owners really have to take action, hire someone to design the service connection, and get it installed. We understand that initially, when we went into this, accessing some of the information through Acela was a little bit cumbersome. So, what we did was put everything on the Water Department's webpage, and it's much more accessible, I think, at this point, and you'll see through the slides. So, on the Water Department homepage, you can see in the ballooned area, under Department News, is two links for the water tie cards and the septic plans. So, first we'll go through the water service tie cards. So, on that link, for the service tie cards, there is two steps. Step one, you're going to click a link, and you're going to find your water account number. If you have a recent bill, you can look there as well. Once you've obtained your account number, you're going to go back and click what's referred to as step two on the webpage. And that's going to open a Dropbox folder or an Office 365 window, and you're going to scan through there and find your account number. And once you click that, it will bring up your service tie card, which you can download, print, or look at on your screen. From there, you know, water service tie cards, what exactly are they? What are you looking at? Depending on when your service was installed, there's a good chance someone might have drawn this on the back of a pickup truck 40 years ago. As you can see, there's a lot of lines and numbers, and it could be confusing. So, these are four examples, and it's kind of difficult to see on the projector of, you know, what you might come across when you identify your service tie card. If you have a recent water service, we draw them all in AutoCAD now. It's very clear and easy to see. As I mentioned, some were drawn, you know, nearly 100 years ago. So, one of the things I'd like to offer, too, if someone does download their service tie card and they're having a difficult time interpreting it, please send me an email, and I will, you know, mark it up and try to get you some more clear information, because I do understand that they can be difficult to read. So, the service tie card that we were looking at a moment ago, what I did was highlight what the actual water service line is in blue in this image, and circled the dimensions from the house in red. And really, if you look, this little blue circle is the water shut-off valve, and that's going to be as close to your property line on the street frontage, and that's really going to be where the sewer contractor is going to be bringing your stub to, you know, that same depth of your property. So, what you're going to want to do is use the tie card to identify where that shut-off valve is. There are situations where they're exposed, and you can walk out in your front yard and see it. In other instances, they may be buried. But if you take a tape measure and pull it from the corner of your house, that's going to bring you right there. And it should be just, if it's not at the surface, it should be just below it.
I think that's me. So, the same way you got to the website to find your water service ties, the same way you'll find your septic tie. If you go onto the town's website and you click on the water droplet and you go to the wastewater site, there's a link there that says to go to the Water Department, and it would take you directly there. So, once you're on to the Water Department website, there's the part that says septic plans. You just click on it, and it's a one-step process rather than two. All of the septic plans and septic as-built cards are listed by address, starting with the street number. If you don't find your address there, it means the Health Department doesn't have any record of your septic system or site plan, and you can contact us for more information on how to locate things. There are a handful or so that we just don't have any information on.
I seem to be one of them.
Unfortunate.
I don't, and actually, I've had my septic pumped two or three times, so they're able to find it.
Yeah, the company would probably have the record of where to locate it. So, once you click on your address, the picture on the right will show up for an as-built. So, on the right, there's a picture of an as-built. They're not all this pretty. Sometimes they are hard to decipher. But basically, they'll pick two points of reference on the house, and where those two points meet is a tie, and that's where you locate the top of your septic system. There's usually an inlet and an outlet part of the septic tank, a distribution box, and then a leaching component. And it's important to know that your as-built may be different than what your proposed plan is. Sometimes the installer would get to your house in 1985 and say, there's a giant tree here. I want to put the system in a different place. So, if you have an as-built, it's more accurate than a designed plan is. And if you have a septic site plan in addition to your as-built, there'll be two files that you can click on. So, you'd click on the other file, and you'd come up with a site plan. And this is an example of a site plan, and it's really difficult to see on the projector, but it'll show the road layout and where your proposed water line is, gas line. Sometimes the utilities are shown pretty clearly there.
All right, so, one of the questions that we've been trying to answer, and, you know, we receive a lot of feedback on, is what do I do with all this information, and how do I fill out this sewer service location form that we're going to be given? So, what we're going to do now is both of the water service tie card and the septic system as-built plans that were used in this presentation, we're actually going to go through the process of drafting up that sewer service location form. So, for those who are at home, this presentation was in the packet, so if you're looking for a reference, that may be some good guidance as well. So, on the right, you see the blank copy of the form. And what you're going to want to do is, just as we showed you, you know, identify where your water service and your existing septic system is. And every case is going to be unique. There are people who have finished basement, some who don't. So, these are some of the considerations that as you make these determinations, you know, each homeowner is going to come across something a little bit different. But as a general rule, moving forward, this property, we've now obtained our existing conditions information. Again, the service tie card and the septic system plan. So, what we did with this is we used that information to go back a slide. So, the water service tie card here shows a dimension from, it says T E L box, right? And then, dimensions from the corner of the actual property. So, when I went and pulled this up on Google Maps, you can do the street view, I was actually able to see right that yellow dot there is actually the telephone box. So, for this home, it's relatively easy. Measure from that telephone box over 60 feet, and then the dimension from the corner of the property and cite that shut-off valve. So, for this home, the septic is coming out the back. Again, it's a little light on the screen here. So, they have two options as to where they should or could cite their sewer service. If the water's going down the middle, they have option A, which would be ultimately disrupting their driveway and a little bit more invasive, or option B, where they could come around the right side of their house and down the, it's a mulch planting bed, there isn't much vegetation in there. And they could cite that stub anywhere in that red cloud there and hook up pretty much no problem. So, it may seem like a daunting task, but if you are able to identify where that water service is and where your septic service is, your septic system is, you can see that there really is a decent amount of flexibility there as to where to put your sewer stub. And then, on the next slide here, we have some examples for this property of what a completed sewer service location form would be. So, you can see we've drawn on the right side the telephone hole box that was there and added a dimension 15 feet from the telephone box to the stub location. And that's all they're looking for. We've got, yeah, just one more slide.
That's our resources. The website's updated frequently with new information. Our services, as far as questions on what things mean, and on the tie cards, we're always available to help. Any one of the Health Department staffs able to tell you what is going on on your septic plan or your as-built card. And then, the Wastewater Support Committee is always available for questions and answers, and if they don't know the answer, they'll get the answer for you. And they recently came out with the Homeowners Connection Guidebook, which is available website as well as in print here at Town Hall.
Another thing that, you know, keep in mind, you know, Megan and I intend to coordinate with CDM Smith when these service location forms go out to hold workshops where people will be able to come in if it's not something they're comfortable doing on their own. We can help look at their service tie card, their septic system as-built, and try to provide some guidance.
Thank you. In terms of when you say about this form and, you know, the location, so they've got, you know, the stub and the five feet and the 15 feet, in terms of a homeowner looking at that, taking all in that information that you've just showed us how to get, but that actual drawing and numbers and all, they would confirm with whoever they're having design there?
They wouldn't need to do that initially. These forms are going out before the order to connect is going out. So, these forms are going to be required before they need to hire an engineer theoretically. They can hire an engineer anytime, but we can help them say, yes, this would be an okay area to put your stub.
So, they would be really submitting these, and then you'd be reviewing them to see if these made sense?
They'll be reviewed by the resident engineer from CDM Smith.
Okay, okay. Any other questions from the board? Larry?
No.
I have none, no. Thank you.
Ed?
Actually, behalf of one of my clients, I met the engineer she's hired, because she was, had gone home to New Jersey and just opened the property out so he could measure and take a look and look at the possible options, and there's sort of two going. Her septic system goes out the back. One would require sort of rerouting plumbing underneath the house and going out a sidewall, and the other would hook into the sewer line as it gets outside the back of the house and clear of the decks and whatnot. The two options, that one, though, as it comes around the house, would require about seven fairly significant turns, which in a sewer line is never, if you can minimize the number of turns, it's a good idea. The other one, the other side, will require just one turn or two 45-degree turns, which is, I think, a very good situation, but would be a little bit tricky on passing by a couple of trees without having to take them down. But what, I guess, the point, the thing that absolutely stunned me, though, when we were out trying to locate the water service turn-off in the front corner of the lot, and I asked, you know, based on the distance, are you going to have enough fall? And he says, oh, yeah, no problem with fall. The sewer line out in the street is going to be 29 feet deep, which he's absolutely stunned me.
I don't know if that's true either.
Well, no, he pulled out his, pulled out his profiles and...
They are pretty deep in septic.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm hoping as they bring the stub to the property line, it's not down at 29 feet.
Yeah, no, they would put a riser and get it up.
Good.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not aimed at you folks, but it's just a general comment about the whole process in East Howard Which. I'm not going to hold back. I've been peculiarly unimpressed with that area of CDM Smith's expertise, the public engagement. I mean, there may be terrific engineers, and they can come up with the design for the thing and everything, but in the area of you don't know what you don't know because you don't know it, we can't presuppose some of the glitches. I know we know some of them, the hardship situations where people may have just put it in the septic system or anything. We had talked about getting a project manager for this, and I really hope it's not for the ribbing cutting for the actual system to start, because this is when everybody is in a good place to know that they're missing something, that organizationally, this should have occurred, or that should have occurred, so that this goes more smoothly. You guys are doing a terrific job to try to engage. So is the Water Committee. But, again, this is the weak area. We've talked about this. We've asked to have such a project manager come forward, and that was in the early part of summer. We're sitting here now, and we're going to be wishing each other Merry Christmas soon. So, at some point or another, I'd love to see some progress made with that. We both know the RFP that went out was substantially limited. That's why nobody responded to it, because knowing how much was available, it was pointless to actually bid on it, because it was short of what they needed to be able to put the time in.
Thank you.
But this is the one area. And if anybody here wants to say that I'm possibly wrong about this, don't get choked up on us.
I'm not choking you. It's joking.
If anybody wants to advocate for CDM Smith being stellar in the area of public relations and problem-solving with the public, then they can speak up now. But this is the, nobody's really perfect in everything. This is their weakness. We need to have a solution for this so that we can pull together all of the assets in town, and we got a number of them. There are a lot of people who are doing good work, but it'd be really good if it wasn't, I've said this before, Chris can't set aside from 1:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon for wastewater central phone calls. It's not going to happen. Somebody's got to be steering the ship. That's all I'm going to say.
Chris?
Well, just to that point, we did do an RFP. I don't necessarily disagree that, you know, we sent it out. I think it was the best efforts, really, of the Wastewater Support Committee. We have tried to reach out to people to see what, you know, in the marketplace, to see who's out there that could do this kind of work. I think that the Wastewater Support Committee is looking at kind of tightening up and creating a more detailed, I'm looking at Larry because I'm off base here, but to get more detail. And we will continue to meet with providers that we sent to, geez, now you got me going, but to see if there are, you know, what we need to do to try to secure it in the capital budget. You know, I think this is one of these cases where you're going to pay for what you want to pay for, and if we need to have somebody to do it, and we need to be closer to the range of $100,000, you know, I've put in a more substantial request, and I have funded that request, at least initially here, to be able to do that. And that money becomes available July 1, and we do have money potentially available now, and certainly can go to the reserve fund transfer to get someone on board sooner to get that person started or that agency started. But, you know, I can only procure what people are actually going to bid on, and we're trying to design something that isn't that common, I don't believe. And we're having a little bit of a struggle finding the right person or entity to accomplish what we're seeking to accomplish.
You know, the most success I've had is really word of mouth. I've been out to a number of people's homes. I give them my cell phone number. I say, pass it on to your neighbor, you know, let me answer the questions for you. And that's been fairly successful. I mean, I get a number of, you know, probably three to five calls a week, you know, asking, people asking for help or inquiring about, who knows, you know, anything that has to do with the sewer project. The demographics are tough. You know, we have 10,000 water accounts, and we have, I think, under 30%, maybe 10% who pay electronically, you know? So, word of mouth, I've found, has been kind of a blessing for us, at least going through this process. You know, so word of mouth I've found is, has been kind of a blessing for us, at least going through this process and trying to get people comfortable with, um, where they need to be before construction starts.
You know, on that note, didn't we talk about, it was probably over a year ago, um, and about like a Facebook page or something like that that would help also with getting the word out in terms of. It might, it might be useful to have that up and have, you know, different contact information on there or just general questions. It might actually reduce some of the calls. But I think to, to Don's point, it's true, I mean, we've been talking about some because you, you guys have done a remarkable job and, and, you know, Chris says too, and obviously, it's not your primary function. You have a lot of other things to do on a daily basis and I, I think that we do need to bring that discussion back, uh, as Don has referenced and, and really try to dig down and, you know, on what exactly we hope to get out of that position and what we're willing to pay for it. I think it's a real discussion that we need to have and I think we need to have it sooner than later. Um.
Yeah, go ahead Julie.
The other question I had is, um, in terms of linking that information from the wastewater website, which I think is great for that to be our main place. Um, have you received any, um, topographical, uh, files? I, I thought that David Young said CDM had sent them over.
Yeah, so I have, um, the most recent set of CAD files. Um, so yes.
Okay, thanks.
I mean, I have the design, you know, the ninety percent complete design drawings in AutoCAD, um, that were provided from CDM.
Mm-hmm.
As well as, um, progress prints that are full size.
And the progress prints are on the newly, uh, new documents section of the wastewater website.
Okay, so.
So there's two files, progress print, contract one, contract two.
Okay.
And they're the ninety percent drawings.
And they show elevations and such?
Yeah, so those.
Spot elevations, yeah.
They'll show, um, there'll be some topography on the upper part of them that's showing the plan view and then e- each of the designs, drawing sets has, looking at the street from the elev-, you know, aerial view. And then it shows a profile of the actual sewer line, sewer mains are gonna be in the street.
Okay.
Um, so those are looking, you know, and they're showing the elevations of the sewer mains as well as the elevations of the sills that they shot.
Oh, okay.
So you can look, you know, if someone wants to look at those plans, they can see that the sill elevation of their home is twenty feet above the sewer main in the street.
Okay. So that, and that's on the main wastewater website?
Yes. Recently added documents.
Okay, alright, great, thank you. Larry?
Well, I obviously support what Don is saying because I was pushing for a project manager, year and a half ago and we decided we couldn't spend the money. But, you know, we're spending thirty million dollars, we can afford some money for a, a project manager. And I do think with the wastewater support committee in action, uh, we probably need to, uh, Chris, expand that procurement, maybe not tighten up, but expand it, have some program management elements. As well as, uh, communication coordinator, because you guys are working really hard, but we need to fo- to focus and put this together. I do have a, uh, and thank you all for your work, I do have one plea and that is, uh, Ed mentions the, uh, some of the, uh, folks have hired an engineer to help them do this plan. And I know we've had some back and forth here and I'm not sure we're driving that, we're not in actual politics at the moment. But the end result is, there appears to be some animosity between CDM Smith and the engineer. And, and so questions being raised aren't being answered. And it's, and I've got a couple of people come to me and feel like they're in the middle of trying to get information. And I'd like to, I'd like to work out so that information is free flowing, if not directed to the homeowner, then to the engineer he's hired. Cause that's why he's hired him, because he just wanted to go through the hassle of figuring this out. So I would just plead that wherever that friction exists, that we, we work to make that disappear so that it's, it's working for the homeowner.
It's the first I've heard of any, um, I guess, conflict. I know initially CDM, you know, engineers have asked about obtaining the CAD drawings, you know, it's really gonna expedite their job, they're just gonna. They already have the street and the home and everything already in the CAD, so they, they don't really have to do much work. Um, I know CDM was reluctant to give out the design drawings at thirty percent. Um, and even at ninety percent, because the thought was if they are using progress prints or design drawings, that, you know, there's a one hundred percent chance that out in the field when they're installing this, that elevations are gonna change, um, locations of utilities are gonna change. Um, and if that information was given to engineers, you know, prior to the completion of the project, that they may design something that won't work after the sewer ser- sewer system is installed. Um, so I know that that was one conversation that I thought was fairly understood on both sides, that until there's an as-built drawing, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to design a sewer connection. Um, when you don't know the invert elevation of the pipe you're connecting to. Um, so that was the only conversation I'm aware of.
And that's my understanding, that I think they were looking for the elevations and so on, so they could give the preliminary drawings. I'm just saying that I'd like it to be as user friendly to the homeowners as possible and I want them to be caught.
Alright, and.
In the, in the friction between CDM Smith and the engineer.
I haven't, to be honest, I have received, uh, two sets of CAD files to date from CDM and not one inquiry from anyone requesting them yet.
I have, I've had engineers requesting them and I've told them they're on the website, they're available to anybody.
I, I'm just mentioning this to, watch out for it for me if you will, because I like friendly people rather than unfriendly people.
Do we?
Michael?
I'm good, thank you.
Anybody else have any other que- oh, Sharon, sure.
Sharon Flinger, wastewater support. Um, I have a question here. A few weeks ago, this, this whole discussion about whether we were looking at a, um, communication coordinator or a project management came up. And I know we didn't get any response to the first, first timeout for coordinator, uh, communication coordinator. Um, and we were supposed to, as the committee, go back and maybe revamp for that RFP. I wanna get some clarification, are we looking for a, just a coordinator or a project manager? Now, I'm gonna put my two cents in here, not as part of the committee, but as the chairman of the committee and, and the way I see this going forward. I don't, I don't think that just a coordinator, uh, communication coordinator is gonna be enough. There are more things on, on that list of things to do with this project beside what, what, um, Megan and Dan are handling. Um, one of the things that we should be doing is going back and looking at, um, the spreadsheet that came out and what were some of the requirements for, um, the CWMP in general. What's been done, has it been done, has, has it been submitted? To look at some of those other issues and there really hasn't been a lot of time to do that. And up till now, I think what we've done, I think has been helpful and I, I think Megan and Dan are doing a lot to, um, add to that. So I think that could give us a little bit more time to look at some of the other things that I think is the committee we should be doing. But I don't wanna take the time to look at revamping an RFP for, uh, a communication coordinator. If we're really gonna be looking for a project manager, which is what I think you really need. And under a project manager would come coordinating of outreach. So I think that would, would, would fall under that. Now, I understand, you know, that the money isn't there, I don't know enough about the workings of this, I'm just saying, I do think you need that. If you're looking at a project that is worth this amount of money over a forty-year timeframe, that you really have to invest the money in getting somebody to coordinate this. Instead of having, um, these two working on some issues, we are working on issues, he's working on issues and a lot of this isn't coordinated. Um, so that's just my, my take on this and I think for our committee, we need some direction on, are we just looking for, uh, uh, an outreach person? Are we looking for a project coordinator? In that case, then it's going to be up to the town and the Board of Selectmen to do that, but I don't wanna waste our time, you know, discussing this when this isn't really where we're headed. So I think we need some direction from the board as well.
And I think that that's something we should put on our agenda, i- if, if we can put it on for next week, we really should. Cause it's a discussion that needs to be had sooner rather than later, so. Ed?
Yeah, I, I, uh, I have not, can't remember when it was, but we chatted about this shortly after I was.
Year and a half ago?
No, no, it was first weekend.
Yeah.
We've had a little more chats.
And, uh, you know, at that time, I talked about the, the beneficial process we had with, uh, building the Monomoy, having a project manager. Uh, uh, acting on the towns or the schools' behalf and, uh, advocated that we do that way. And I, I think we're finding out that, uh, as this picks up steam, it's gonna be hard to stay, stay ahead of it without hiring somebody to do that.
I, I think it's good to have it back, you know, as an agenda, so we, we don't go too far ahead. But I think, uh, Sharon, you raised a good point, uh, but you've broadened the scope of what we're talking about. You know, because it's, it's, uh, what you guys are doing, you know, what we're doing on the collection, but what Sharon's talking about is also fulfilling our two oh eight obligations. In terms of when we file reports, when we, uh, keep track of the, uh, capital budget items. You know, we've been, you've been focused on the guide of connections, so it's a broader subject. And that we need to come back and, and I agree. Uh, be sure we as a board understand that what Sharon mentioned is broadening it from what our discussion was tonight. And it's an important aspect that we keep the whole thing in order and, and progressing forward, so. Uh, just get some dot points on that and I can prepare some dot points to help on the agenda item for discussion points.
Okay. Don, did you have another question?
Uh, no, wait for, it's agenda.
Comment. Okay. Alright, thank you very much, appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
And, uh.
Julie, can I, uh, break the agenda a little bit while Megan before she leaves?
Sure.
Uh, because on the department reports, I see that Megan was elected as the, uh, what, the Cape Cod, Chair of the Cape Cod?
Uh, the Cape and Ions Health Agent Coalition.
And so I think congratulations are in order and if you were to bail out, because we're done with this discussion, I don't wanna miss the opportunity.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Megan, that's great, great for you, great for us, so we appreciate it and your extra effort there too.
Thank you, we'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Thanks. Um, so we'll move to new business approval of the request by Harwich Cranberry Festival for one day wine and malt license for event at the Cultural Center on November twelfth, two thousand eighteen.
I'll be recusing myself.
Thank you, Ed. Michael?
A move that we approved, but the request by the Harwich Cranberry Festival for one day wine and malt license for event at the Cultural Center on November twelfth, two thousand eighteen.
Second. I beat Don by a second.
Moved in second.
A millisecond.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, request for the.
You can come back.
Use of cable fund in the amount of five thousand, five dollars for installation of equipment to upgrade the small hearing room. Michael?
A move that we approved the request for use of cable fund in the amount of five thousand, five dollars for installation of equipment to upgrade the small hearing room.
At the request of?
At the request of Jamie.
Good one. Second.
Station manager.
Okay, moved in seconded, any further discussion?
I actually thought we'd approved this a couple of weeks ago.
No, this is a second hearing.
She talked about it.
No, that's, that's separate.
Oh, she talked about it.
Yeah, that's separate anyway, that's on the, uh.
Oh yeah, that is, yeah, that's sorry, right, the policy.
Cable policy, it's totally different.
Okay, so moved in seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Uh, onto old business, cable use policy, sorry, this is a second reading, possible vote to adopt.
Do we need to read it?
I was gonna say, the, uh, the two changes that the, uh, board wanted to see, I believe, uh, the addition of, uh, the annual town meeting for the legislative meeting was added. And then to change the, uh, CD, uh, cost from fifteen dollars to five.
Right.
So what the board requested, uh, those changes have been adopted into it.
Michael?
A move that we approved the cable use policy as presented.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Approval of the revised amended lease agreement between the towns of Harwich and Chatham and the Monomoy Regional School District. Now, this was about the, uh, presentation that we had, I think it was two weeks ago?
Yes.
Okay, Michael?
Chris, question on this, uh, lack of signatures on the contract that's before us, has legal reviewed this yet?
Yes, I actually received this afternoon a, uh, email from John Giorgio saying that he approved it as to form.
Michael?
A move that we approved the revised amended lease agreement between the towns of Harwich and Chatham and the Monomoy Regional School District as presented.
Well, second.
Okay, moved in seconded, any further discussion? Don?
Yep. We have an agreement here that's four and one-half pages long that re- totally replaces the text that preceded it. There is no highlighting to indicate what language was changed to what. I mean, so I'm going a little further than Michael about, is this being proposed? If the, if legal counsel's agreeing to this as to form, that doesn't mean that they're agreeing to it as to process i- to actual change. I, I am not in a position to take this, the last, uh, because this is a re-revised one, uh, based on Chatham's input. I'm not in a position to take what preceded Chatham's, this in the original language and compare them word for word and I don't think any of us are. I'll be, I, I'm not gonna vote for this this way.
Okay, um, any other discussion? Michael?
Yeah, I think that's a fair point, uh, Chatham, I know was going to revote it, but the way I understood this was there was no changes after it came before us last time. Chris, can you comment on that? I believe all Chatham had to do was change it and the school committee had to vote it. They didn't change it, they had to vote it and the school committee.
But they had to vote it, that was my recollection too.
That's my recollection as well.
I mean, if you wanna hold off, I mean, the, the second recommendation, it just, as I look at it, it says he does recommend the town submit the proposal, the proposed amendment to the town's insurance carrier for approval as well.
Right.
So he, he did add, so we can certainly do that before the next meeting.
Why don't I do that?
If someone re- removes their second, I'll, I'll withdraw my motion.
I'll remove my second.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, so we'll re- we'll review after we've got the insurance input.
Yes, and I promise to be happier.
No, thank you, Don, thanks for pointing that out.
No, it was.
Ed, did you have a comment?
Well, the, the, one of the issues that, that Don raised is, is, is there a, the ability for us to get a, a copy that indicates what the changes?
The changes. I thought they provided that last time, but we'll, we'll dig it up and provide.
Some hasn't changed at all.
Yeah, I do, I do think we had that, but that's fine, we should have, we'll have them to compare side by side and we'll have the insurance input and then we'll take it up.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll, we'll do those two pieces.
Yeah. Okay, uh, approve, uh, so we'll hold that. Approval of changes to the Harwich liquor license bill, H four nine three two, and this came back to, uh, us from Sarah Peake with the minor changes and any comment? Go ahead, Don.
Thank you, Madam Chair, if we're, if, if we're gonna be doing this, which, I mean, it's here in front of us, it, the first thing I notice is it's, is in section one. General, the local licensing authority of the Harwich may grant, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming it's the town of Harwich? Section one.
I think that's a fair assumption.
Yeah, except that it's not really in English here. Uh, and the second thing is there is no town of Harwichport, it's the village of Harwichport in the town of Harwich.
So, town of, yeah.
I'm assuming they wanna pass accurate legislation.
Well, I think that's why it's back and forth, because there was some edits, so if we wanna make those couple edits, do you see anything else? Cause I don't see any sense in delaying this any longer.
I don't either, I mean, I'm just assuming, it's the village of Harwichport in the town of Harwich and it's the town of Harwich where it says the Harwich.
I would hate to hold it up.
I would too, yeah.
So with those changes, I would move that we accept the, uh, legislation with the changed language.
Moved in seconded, but, uh, any further discussion?
No, you meant moved in seconded to approve the bill.
Yeah, with those changes.
With the change, with those changes. But do we know if then it's gonna come back again?
It may, you know, I, I can't.
Can you check and be sure it's not gonna get kicked out, you know?
I don't know if House Counsel will just say, yes, that makes sense and that's good, or if House Counsel says, well, I need to review it again because it's not exactly what I sent you.
I know it's a good bag.
Which is why she brought it back to us to begin with. So, I, I mean, that's the only, that's what I would be afraid of, is that it has to come back again.
Well, I'd rather have it come back again than have it get passed with it saying the to- town of Harwichport and, and somebody being granted a liquor license only to have it all, a complaint being made. And it getting taken away from them.
Uh, so it's been moved in seconded, any further discussion?
I would just ask Chris to check with Sarah and see if it, uh.
Yeah.
Before we get carried away, be sure we're okay.
So. Right, so if it's gonna delay it, then we still want the, I guess, the clear, the clear direction here is if it's gonna. is if it's going to delay it, we're still going to say we want to make the change.
Yes.
Yeah, and bring it back again, so. Okay. So, that's the gist of that. All in favor?
Aye.
I was going to say it.
No, you had a long pause there, I was like, sorry.
I was taking a deep breath so I wouldn't choke again.
Michael's on the clock.
Yeah, no kidding.
Sorry.
All right, Town Administrator's report.
Yeah, I'm going to keep this kind of brief tonight, just in terms of, on the tax title, we did provide some information. I think this was kind of a follow-up that there was some request for information about Coppola. So, I did put that in there just to give a sense for how that works. The Cart Barn project, I think I had brought this up, we are on final punch list, so that is basically substantially complete. And just doing the punch list, I think as memory serves, it was just a, a couple of the, the doors, which I think the doors came in, garage doors, and then they have fans need to be relocated. So, there were just two, two items that needed to be done. But, essentially that project is, the building part of that project is, is complete. The operating budget, the instructions did go out. We hope to have the operating instructions back by November 30th. And I think it's at the early December meeting, the second meeting in December, that we'll have the capital outlay suggestions. We did spend a fair amount of time at the last capital outlay committee meeting going over those recommendations. And I think the committee and I were very much on the same page for the majority of them, obviously within the, the budgetary allocations that we have available. So, we have obviously budgetary limits to what we're able to accomplish. And those will be presented to the board for the meeting in December.
Okay. So, do you want to let him finish, and then we'll come back with Michael out of questions, too?
That's fine.
And then just, I already brought up about the, the DHY. So, if, if it's okay with the board, we'll tentatively schedule that for the June 15th. I'll see if I can get the...
Eleven fifteen, right?
November, November 15th.
Is there, are there, are there any other dates possible on that? I mean, I can make it, but it's not possible.
All right. Is there another date possible rather than...
Yeah, I just threw out a date, just, I mean, I can ask them for Wednesday if we want to try for Wednesday.
Okay.
I have plans Wednesday, sorry.
You do?
No, I'm kidding.
You said that like I care.
All right.
Yeah, so I think the 14th, Wednesday, the 14th would work if that works for more of the board members.
Does that work for you?
Just tell me when I...
And then I'll, you want to try for six o'clock?
Sure.
Is that, so people can get home from work?
Okay. So, did you have a question on...
I do, on the tax thing, Chris. Chris, and, and I think this is going to go to a much longer conversation than we want to have tonight. The explanation seemed quite confusing to me. And it might clear up some of my suspicions about owners unknown and how we tax that. But, I, I, this makes no sense. The explanation makes no sense to me at all. So, might I suggest a meeting with Amy?
Yeah, if you want to come in and we can go through, and I, I want to get to where we need to get to to get the answers to that.
Okay.
Okay, so you'll coordinate?
Just to be clear.
Yeah, I'd like to coordinate and then bring it back.
Okay.
And then the, yeah, the, really the last item I had is just to kind of announce that thank you for the board, that you did the final appointment to the Affordable Housing Trust. And we do have a meeting scheduled for, really an organization meeting to kind of get us officially started, November 15th at two o'clock in the small meeting room to kind of get organized. Larry Brophy is a member, and he goes down in Florida, so I'm trying to get a meeting before he heads part south to try to get organized and get moving. But, just to let the public know that. And that concludes my report this evening unless there's any...
And Don had a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's a follow, follow-up to the Town Administrator's report, but within the, the capital portion of whatever presentation you're going to make. I just want to remind you that currently, and as of last year, you started mixing in capital and non-capital items on the capital plan. Technical definition of it is a fifty thousand dollars or more adorable item. So, when that presentation occurs, because I'm going to ask for it then, you might as well hear it now, I would love a subordinate breakout. These are the ones that are the actual capital projects that the Capital Outlay Committee is considering. And these are the other items that for reasons, if you wanted to have them out there, are the non-capital outlay committee items. Because it's impossible to see on a computer screen when you open up that spreadsheet. It's like this big for you to even see, and I'm afraid of something getting hide, hidden in plain sight.
That's interesting, because they are identified, but I guess you're saying they're too small to read.
I do specifically call out in the column anything under fifty thousand. What I did last...
You're missing the point by just generally sorting them by group, it's too busy.
I did for the warrant last year, did two versions of it. One, the total version, which we had as an appendix in the back. And then the version that was any item over fifty thousand. But, it was still on the same, I mean, to get seven years' worth of capital expenditure, which I'm required to do, I mean, it's going to be a busy form.
But, you're not required to, to put sub-fifty thousand dollar items.
No, last year I took them out, but it's still small.
Again, your obligation under the charter is to put fifty thousand or more in, in the seven years in order. The other stuff could be done as a subsection down below each year, where the first items, which are the ones we're really concerned about because they're big items. And then a second section, instead of commingling them. I know they're identified, but it was daunting, because they were like bouncing all over the place, depending on what dollar value they were.
So, you're looking for, just, I just want to make sure I understand, too. So, you're looking for a better readable format, first of all, which I, I understand, but also broken out into a separate...
Real capital?
Right.
And just for the purposes of putting them out there, capital.
But, one thing that I at least want to put out there, it is kind of interesting that when I went through with the Capital Outlay Committee, there are projects in which the design cost is below fifty thousand in year one, if you would, but then the construction cost is above fifty thousand. And the way I interpret it is projects that are over fifty thousand are what's supposed to be highlighted. So, they have asked me, and I, I certainly will do this, that if it's a multi-year project that's going to be ultimately over fifty thousand, then that, those items will be highlighted out. So, we will put that in, but I don't want people, it, it actually happened four times, I think, when we were going through it.
But, in that case, that's actually a capital project because all of those expenses are associated with one thing.
Right.
There were random things that were going on in there that were one-offs, that were thirty thousand or twenty-two thousand, that had no successor years.
Yeah, no, I hear you. I can take those out. The font's still going to be smaller, I mean, it's just, when you have that much material.
Okay. Any other feedback on Chris's report? Because then we have...
No.
Okay. So, the next piece we have, and I just want to say, with the Selectmen's report, I can either do it now or later, but I think we should note how many vacancies we have.
Yeah.
Do you want to do that, though?
No, it's, you can read this, but I'm not sure how valuable it is because we had Matt in here tonight, and Matt said, how many people were missing?
Four.
And how many does it say here?
We're going to go down there.
It says one.
Oh, right, no.
There are different versions of vacancies depending on whether you go to the front office, to Anita's office, or to the website.
Thank you for straightening that out tomorrow, though. We appreciate it.
I am going to say that it's taken me the better part of a year and a half, and we are now at the point where the appointments are done, and the, all of the years that they expire are now in accordance with the charter because they're, they're winding up in staggered terms. That took about a year. The problem here is, is that we don't know who we need to interview. And what it is we need to look to get, if this is inaccurate. And the question, the point is that this isn't a this, this is a them. There's more than one list. The public should be seeing the exact thing that's sitting in the files down in the Selectmen's office, and that should be identical to what's in the clerk's office.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, there's been confusion on, on this for a while now, so, I mean, ultimately...
There's a lot that's wrong with this, this is not an accurate list, I know it's not.
Well, and we also, that goes back to the other list we have, which is the liaison list, which sometimes I, I...
There are different liaison lists when you go onto the committee sites as compared to the Selectmen's liaison list.
Exactly, right. So, we need, that needs to be refined as well. So, then, rather than read how many vacancies there are, let's just at least note that...
There are a bunch, and we need people.
Agricultural, Agricultural Commission, Bike Ways, Board of Appeals, alternate, Building Code, Board of Appeals, Cultural Council, Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee, Harwich Energy Committee, Forest Committee, Health Board, Historic District and the Historical Commission, alternate, Planning Board, alternate, Traffic Safety Committee, Treasure Chest Committee, alternate, Voter Information, Wastewater Support Committee, and Youth Services.
And maybe some more.
And the Harwich Center.
And, oh, and Harwich Center, right. So, those are some of them that if the public at home has any interest and wants to volunteer, they should fill out a committee volunteer form. So, and what about Selectmen's report, Larry?
None.
Michael?
Well, I just want to continue my tirade on my social media thing. So, I actually want to give a public shout-out and congratulate Robin, the Cemetery Commission, again for her award. She got an MMA for the pet cemetery, pet burial ground, whatever we want to call it today. But, I did read on social media today that the only one that wants this is the powers-to-be, and that we should all be thrown out because we're the only ones endorsing this. A pet is a luxury item, it's only a dog. Several, several things along with a little scene created on Queen Anne Road with some skeleton, pet animal skeletons. But, Chris, if I'm not mistaken, this was voted by town meeting to transfer the land to the Cemetery Department for purposes of a pet burial ground, correct?
That's correct.
So, it's not the powers-to-be. Well, actually, it is, it's the legislative body that approved this after it failed five times at town meeting to be sold. So, the group of the same ten or fifteen people that are so negative on the internet, we really aren't just making this stuff up. And just because you read it on social media, doesn't make it true. And Robin has done a great job for the town of Harwich and got an award. And in closing, we are not allowed to, under state law, go on social media and correct these very negative people. And their opinion is important. I would challenge them all to come, ask the chair for a line item on the agenda, and we will debate them here on the actual facts so the public can know the right, the truth instead of what they're making up.
Thank you, Michael. Very well spoken. Don?
You knew you could count on me for a dissenting report. Town meeting can't require anybody to do anything, they can authorize. Secondarily, town meeting never passed an actual project. The land was set aside for use of a project, but there was no funding indicated, there was no capital project approved, which is why it's on the capital plan this year. I commend the fact that she got the award there. The fact of the matter is that when given the opportunity on the ballot, I knew it was an indefinite postponement for the crematorium, it was hugely defeated. And, once again, if they come back for this, there'll be an opportunity for it to come to the ballot because it has to. And then there'll have to be a discussion about what the economics are. But, it is not as simple as eight people who are grumpy. Either that, or you can count me as one of them, as nine.
If I may.
Michael?
Just, just to, just to correct Don Howell. Legal counsel, we have an opinion from legal counsel. I know Don's not particularly fond of that.
Actually, he's the reason we're going back to the capital plan.
But, town meeting voted to transfer this piece of land to the Cemetery Commission. And if the Cemetery Commission raises money through the sale of lots, they can do work on that. And there was debate, and I'm sure Don Howell was at the town meeting when this all happened, because I was there and I saw him. There was debate on what this was going to be used for. A serious amount of debate on what this was going to be used for. And then when the moderator called the question, I believe Ms. Corbett called the question, we voted to transfer the land to the Cemetery Commission for use as a pet cemetery. And that's what I'm talking about is being debated. Your funding source argument has nothing to do with reality. Your support on the cemetery, a pet cemetery, pet burial ground, has nothing to do with reality. It was voted by town meeting for use as a pet cemetery. Funding source, you're right. I give it to you.
Okay.
Stay tuned until May.
Ed?
There's one more thing.
Oh, he has more.
This one's a happy one. Just to remind everybody, there's a Veterans Day commemoration service out at Island Pond on Sunday.
Right, thank you.
So, the public is invited, and I would hope that they, they come and share the deck.
Still your time.
Still my thing I was going to say. Ed?
It's, um, last Wednesday night, I, I don't know if it's called the pleasure, but, but, um, maybe somewhat an honor to attend the symposium or solidarity that was held at the Cape Cod synagogue. Referring to the events that happened, oh, some, a little over a week ago in Pittsburgh. And the, the tenor of, you know, what was brought up by a variety of ministers from the Interfaith Council, from the, I'm not sure what you call them, but from the Buddhist preacher to the Baptist, to Catholic priest, to, um, the, the rabbi, was that there are a lot of still, uh, bad feelings in, in our country that we thought, you know, with the Civil War and with the Civil Rights Movement, we'd gotten past, but they're still very much amongst us in that there is still a lot of discussion that needs to happen in our country and a lot of work that needs to be done to make sure that we are an accepting nation and moving forward. And I just was very moved by the entire program, by the diversity of folks that were there.
Thank you, Michael.
It was truly a remarkable event.
Sounds like a wonderful event, Ed. And actually, that discussion makes me remind everybody to vote tomorrow, Election Day. And also reminder that Carolyn, Carrie mentioned earlier that they're still looking for the donations for the troops. So, that would be helpful if people would go on to the website to get the information of the helpful items to donate. And Ed had mentioned earlier about the Harwich Cultural Center concert on 11:12 at 7:30, I think.
Yes, and, and you'll all notice that I didn't give the name of the band. I'm not exactly sure I know how to pronounce it. It's Kalokiyoli or something.
A Swedish band anyways.
Yes, a Swedish band.
So, thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, in a second.